This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nigle, all presided this meeting. And at this time, I wish that you could join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome everyone. At this time, we will have the local council member bachelor.
Here.
Council member. Congressman Sharpie.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Ombra.
Here.
Councilmember Gilman is calling in, I believe.
She's on here.
I think she is there.
I'm here.
Welcome Laura.
Thank you.
All right, also at the table here, to my left is the city minister of the newsroom. And we will get moving on with the agenda, approval of the agenda and the agenda changes. I do have one change, and that is to move up item number eight A. And we'll put it right up to after the consent agenda. Item eight A will go right after the consent agenda. Mr. Johnson has to be in Green Isle and has to leave early, so we'll accommodate that. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I just have one error correction, number fifteen should be Franklin, not Frank Franklin. Number Franklin.
Oh Franklin. All right, anything else? There are none then, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion by council member on right, second by council member bachelor to approve the agenda as amended. On paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. The consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Approval of September fourteenth twenty twenty council workshop. Approval of twenty, September twenty first twenty twenty council minutes. Approval of September twenty eighth twenty twenty emergency operations meeting minutes. Approval of hiring of Spencer Gifford as part-time paramedic. That is what the PT has sent.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure there wasn't a medical term. Except resignation of Aaron Polly from Arlington Area Ambulance. Except resignation of Lindsay Holt from Arlington Area Ambulance. Approved drone permit for James Noxen on October eighth to fly over cemetery. And lastly, approve hiring of Deborah Ramech as library aide in Arlington Public Library.
Can I just say something about Deborah?
Yes.
She's not a city employee. For council members who may not know, she's a county employee. We are invoiced by Sibley County. We don't, we're not, she's a county employee, so we don't really have any say in her performance evaluations for hiring. It's more of a just letting the city of Arlington know.
Know that she's there. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Sharpie, second by council member Bachelor to approve the consent agenda as read. On paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Okay, at this time, I would call on Tim Scanlon Johnson to make his planning zoning report. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so we are at a hundred and fifty building permits for this year, including five, this is in the first five days of October. The planning commission met last week, as we know. They requested that I go and maybe do some comparisons for our numbers from year to year and quarter to quarter. And I figured I would actually go through and break down categories so that we can compare the types of so that we can compare the types of permits being applied for to see if it's like increased. So I'll have that to you by the next planning commission people or sooner, probably sooner. Yeah, let's see. Yes, and so the planning commission also last week, I presented an initial plan for a side park. Just sort of an overview idea to see if the plan was interested in that. And we looked at the parks chapter of the comprehensive plan because we're considering that it's the comprehensive plan. And the park chapter does call for investments in parks and trails, and that was six years ago.
Test, test. Sorry.
All right, and yeah. So there's a few grants that I've been interested in applying for that eventually in the future may need some council approval or general resolutions, you know. Acknowledging you're in favor of these grant proposals, including the tap grant, which I prepare a letter for in the next month. And I'll show you that letter of intent for the potential side park project at the end of this month. And yeah, that would be like a four-year funding. It's a, it's a big long-term grant. Yeah, so I'll show you that in a month. And all right, so moving on then to my other item is the, for your consideration is the right-of-way extension permit by the Chamber of Commerce President for the freight night. They're requesting to obstruct Main Street on the night of October thirty first. And I figure this would be a good thing to bring to council for your approval denial specifically rather than on a staff level due to the current global pandemic. We have, for your knowledge, we have heard opposition or at least hesitation from Sibley schools. And we'd like to put it to your consideration.
There was email about to them.
Yeah, yes, so you have anything to add to that?
Matt is here, Matt Nelson is here.
Is something to add to that?
Hi, Matt Nelson, Arlington Area Chamber of Commerce President. Basically, right night, everybody's familiar with it. Six, seven years ago, we started it where kids go trick-or-treating from business to business down Main Street. And we've always blocked off Main Street to make it a completely safe area. With the COVID pandemic out there, there's still nothing that says that businesses won't hand out candy. Businesses have that option to be able to hand out candy, although some businesses are going to. Whether the chamber is involved or not. So as a chamber, we looked at it and said, okay, should we make it as safe as we can and request they have that street blocked up? The chamber looks at it like this, we're not going to advertise this, so we're not going to have a big fight. It's going to be a whole thing, it'll probably be in the paper. If you guys allow us to block the street off, the street will be a safe area for the kids. If not, businesses are still going to hand out candy, there's still going to be kids, it's just the street won't be safe. That's, 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 that's.
Matt, can I ask you, was this a unanimous recommendation from the Chamber of Commerce?
Well, honestly, to tell you the truth, the chamber wanted to put in this permit request for you guys, and then we're going to look at it again on Monday.
So the chamber hasn't voted on it?
We, we, no, we haven't done a final vote on it, we're still going to look at it on Monday. Whether you guys approve it or not tonight to close that street. Just because we don't know what's going to happen over the next twenty-some days. Well, the governor might come over and say, can't do this. And obviously, we're not going to do that. For the most part, what the permit asking for strictly blocks the street up. There's not going to be no haunted house or games or anything like that on top of the, they usually is. It's more or less just making it a safe area. Those kids or families and businesses that choose.
So how would, how would the chamber or the local businesses be able to provide sixty separation outside during an event like this? I mean, is there anything in place that they're, that you're bringing forward that would?
No, no, we're not asking permission for the businesses to hand out candy, they can do that without the chamber, without. It's, it's, we're asking for a safe street for kids to travel. Provided that this is official. Like I said, we're not going to, we're not pushing this as our regular night event, the regular all-of-heat event. But for the last six years, we've had that street blocked out for the kids. And now we're looking at it saying, if, I always feel that if you guys say no, that's fine. There's still maybe businesses that do the handing out candy. I've had businesses tell me whether we call it freight night or not. They'll say that's your choice. And we look at it saying, we put this permit in, we're doing everything we can to try and make it safe.
I guess in my opinion, I would be open to blocking out the streets if you guys had something, protocols in place to keep everybody safe. Right, so I mean, that's where I'm coming from, I don't know how the rest of you feel. But I, I think that's bottom line, I think we have to be responsible.
Families need to be responsible, if, if they're going to go off security and they want to be achieved, this is everybody else's. The business responsibility separate, that is, individuals' responsibility if they're watching the treating, which is going to happen no matter what we say or do. You know, if businesses are going to be outside, are they going to be outside or inside? How are they doing it? Other years, businesses, some businesses have people lock in, some businesses have. Right, and whether the businesses have people come in individually, one at a time, you know, family at a time, or however they decide to do it. They're going to do it no matter what, whatever, close the street off or not. Yeah, initially, and I think it is even on the permit, anybody that wants to be involved will request you to socialize, keep the six-foot distance, wear a mask, wear rubber gloves when you're handing out candy, but there's no way to enforce it. What's the timeline?
I do not believe it's on the permit.
I want to say maybe four thirty cars asked to be removed because of five this.
Yeah, this is five to eight. Yeah.
This, this, this one's something that if it's possible to block the street off for those that want to be involved. You guys don't want to block it off? That's fine as well, it's just that, I do know that there's businesses that's the plan.
Okay, we are asked for a decision on this at this time because it's part of the finding zoning report. So is there someone that wishes to make a motion, one way or the other?
I would almost like to table it to see what happens at the meeting on next week with those guys and bring it back and come to the following week.
Send a motion. I'll second that. Thank you Laura.
Motion by council member Bachelor, second by council member Gilman to table the decision on the Arlington Area Chamber of Commerce right night. And that is a request to close down part of Main Street. Further discussion? There are none, on paper say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion's carried, you know. Okay, and then it will be taken up at, we'll be put in back at our next council meeting. Okay, anything else, Tim?
Tim left already.
I didn't even see him go out.
He slipped already.
All right, then we'll jump back up to addressing the council and is there anyone wishes to address the council of any other item right now?
Yeah, actually, I'll just say.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, I, I gave, we, we had, in Arlington, we've been having a couple Arlington meetings. Arlington is a buzzword in the area, I'm just wondering what's going to happen, what are we going to do? On Friday, we had a meeting and we put together what we believe is a pretty solid plan that will make Arlington, will, will allow us to do something for Arlington. Yes, make it as safe as we possibly can come up with. I didn't get it until today, so wasn't able to put on your guys' agenda for this meeting. But in there, I laid out the plan, basically in a nutshell. It's a drive-through parade rather than a drive-by parade. The thought process on that is, is people, people want to see Arlington's lights, they want to get in the holiday cheer. If we line the floats down Main Street, basically from Highway five going east on the north and south side of Main Street, and then direct traffic down the center of Main Street as they drive east. It gives them the feeling of a parade, except they're actually a parade. But you have floats on both sides, you get the, the lights that go over the top that turns you puts up the water fleet here. It has, has that best, best of feeling to it. We don't know how many floats would be interested in this. We don't know how many people would be interested in this. I do know that this does open the door to people that normally don't get to see the parade, elderly people, things like that, that they get in the car and they get some of the parade. To keep people from congregating, we talked about barricading, the city parking lot, any open lots, the sidewalks. All of the businesses that are open during this timeframe, except the bake shop, have the door either on the side or to the back that could be used instead of any traffic on, foot traffic on Main Street. So it doesn't hinder the businesses, that would be, those businesses are Arlington House and Doug Oak. I'm sorry, I can't think of the Hispanic restaurant that popped in my head. The, the liquor store, and it's, those are the ones that are usually open during the timeframe. And they all have, like I said, rear entrances. The only way to see the parade is to drive the parade. People can make floats and only decorate one side of it, they only have to decorate one side, they only see one side. The thought process is still to be able to showcase our town, showcase our businesses, and still do something that keeps Arlington and Arlington as a win mine for next. There's a map that's included there, figured out a way to direct the traffic over the county road nine, bring them through. And then when they get to Fort Avenue East, I'll get out of town, I said, we can use that. Come through Arlington and, you know. Restrictions on the floats will be, the amount of people allowed on the float to try and keep people from congregating. Anybody on the float has to remain on the float or in the float during events, so people aren't putting up. There won't be fire pits and things like that for people to stop.
I have the same question as last time, did the chamber vote on this and what was the chamber vote, was it unanimous?
The Arlington Committee has come up, the chamber has not.
Did they, did the Arlington Committee vote on this?
Yes.
What was the vote?
Actually, I don't, it's their recommendation to the Chamber, the Arlington Committee.
So will the chamber be taking this up Monday also?
Yes, the chamber will take this up on Monday, they're looking for direction from you guys. If it's a no from the city, we're looking at having the exact same thing. Problem with that is it doesn't showcase.
All right, well, typically, when someone speaks at this time, it's, it's a matter of input and no conversation. The council will discuss that at a future meeting. And we will debate both sides of the issue at that time. And if you do want to get back to us with, with the chambers, you know, the chamber had unanimous backing on this or not sufficient backing, that would be appreciated. Sure. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item six announcements.
Okay, we have the Arlington Fire Department relief drive-through pork chop dinner coming up this Saturday. It'll be at the fairgrounds at Porky's, so come over there, ten dollars a meal, support the fire department.
Item seven, communications.
This is another one of the nice emails we received complimenting us, complimenting us on our memorial park, and I wanted council to see it. I'm noticing a pattern, we get a lot of positive comments. About our memorial park. MMPA public summary, there's an email from David Niles, as usual, in your packet. Let me know if you have any questions on that. And then the next two items are for your information, copy of the August tenth EDA minutes and a copy of the September third, we had a joint EDA planning and zoning meeting.
Any question in regard to those items? Okay, we will move on. Moving on to item eight, it has been taken care of, these September public works report, Kirby Whitehouse. Good evening Kirby.
Okay, yeah, so September, we already started scooping streets, which is really unusual. I've already made, on my third pass through town already. Not continuous, but as it piles up. It seems really early for that already, but it's kind of keeping us busy. Mosquito spray for the last time this year, late September, I think we can shut down on that for the year hopefully. And I think the year went pretty good with that, I talked with Amy and asked whether we received any complaints, and she said no. And she was aware of, and I really didn't hear much either, so the spraying must be helping. Got word from browse that our bill date for the new pickup that we ordered is October twelfth. So he expects it to be here at the end of October, and then I can line something up with Chris Steele to get our plow put on it. Sounds like we should have that before the fall season, which is nice. Been chipping away at some street painting when the weather allows it. Tonight, actually, I hired out our, our stripes on Main Street and the curbs. And also some curbs around schools, so there's a guy over there, right now, I've never been on that. We had some curb work done just today as well, I think that's getting finished up tomorrow. Some odds and ends around town that were looking pretty bad. Hot patching is coming later this month that you guys asked a few meetings ago, waiting for the curb work to get done so they can, I mean, that, that's the patch around the curb work. We've been also chipping away at the tree planting in the boulevards, I think we're almost halfway through the trees. It's okay, because October's a good month to do that. Been doing some tree pruning as we see needed. Continuing the mowing trim in the parks. House has been busy this time of year. We are working on replacing a section of town over here with street signs. And then kind of started with the chestnut debacle in that address over here, so I used up the budget on the street signs and we just got shipment in last week, so Daniel started, started on that. So we received a email from Minnesota Department of Agriculture, they, I shared it with Amy, I think she put that on Facebook. It's on the Emerald dashboard, has been discovered in Sibley County, sounds like it's somewhere in the northeast side of the county. So it seems to be slowly but surely approaching, asked Amy to share some information and link on Facebook. People want to check that out, they don't know.
What it looks like?
We have a lot of asteries in town, a lot of people's yards and the boulevards. So it's something to keep an eye on. I'm waiting on a quote for mine's building gutters from Minnesota gutter. We should be able to get that done this year. Other than that, looking forward to finish up some painting stuff, a fire hydrants and some curbs and rusty bottoms on the street by most of town. Big leaves, I'd like to dress the alleys up with some salt. Finish the shop roof. Yeah, odds and ends from the side, yeah.
Sounds like your to-do list is long.
Yeah. I'm done chasing the contractors, I'm nothing to break through, Daniel, we're cracking the land. Yeah, yeah, we're trying to capitalize on it, we've got a rainy September. That's all, are you firm on that mosquito spraying then? Well. Yeah, I don't know, we saw one flying last night. I'll be ready to go if they come back to go.
Okay, any comments for Kirby, any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
September ambulance report, Jamie Whiteley, unanimous manager, good evening.
All right, just a couple of things to report on. Last week, Arlington Fire invited us to kind of do a joint training with Landingsilk and Hemorrhage Control. That training was provided by North Memorial and Air Care. Unfortunately, Air Care has been playing because of the ceiling as well, but they didn't have a good turnout this part of that training calls. Currently, we're looking at getting some quotes on transitioning to the EPCR. Now, right now, we have a traditional paper, Mr. Run Form that we fill out, each nine-one-one and transfer. We're looking at transitioning now to electronics. Hopefully, after the first year, we can kind of afford with that, since we still are in compliance with EMS RV. We're just going to keep going and we're going to entertain on looking at some grants to kind of offset some of those budget costs. The students, they're making headway, they are set to take their skills tests on the twenty-first of this month. So the ambulance staff and myself have been working together as you kind of help prep them for both their written and their skills exam coming up. So hopeful, this is good. And then also, this Saturday, we are hosting a very mixed skills session with the South Central EMS. And it's just, basically, it gives us the opportunity to have other ambulance services and fire services to brush up on their various sets of skills. And each location has an, has an opportunity with South Central to basically host those sessions to make sure everybody's up to par with their skills. But we will have a couple of people from our ambulance service also participating in that, and I'll be there to help them out. And then one final tidbit, our next ambulance meeting is on the clock. So that's all I've got to report.
You know, earlier, we approved the You know, earlier we approved the hiring, a few hirings and resignations, is that something you see, is I mean, that's just going to happen, it's just the nature of the beast where people are going to be how many people are going to be leaving, or is this is this a reaction to Arlington going on going back on their own again? And what can you tell us about that?
I don't think it's a reaction, I think it's just the work life balance for some of the members. The couple that resigned just recently, it is a work life balance issue, it's nothing personal, it has nothing to do with any tax royalty issues or anything to that extent. It was just, they just didn't have time to commit to that.
Okay, I can understand that. Okay. You also mentioned about joint training with the fire department, is there is there other opportunities? I I look at that as very positive move to do some joint work with with the fire department?
Absolutely.
And I would tell the fire department the same thing, do joint work with anyone, is there other possibilities or chances?
Yes, yes, both John and I have talked. He's in the process of looking at a training schedule and I've asked him to kind of be involved in that. Because I think it's important that our ambulance service be involved with their training schedule and them also be involved with us, because we're supposed to be working so closely together.
Right.
And and John's on the same page as I am, so we both feel pretty pretty good about merging some of those trains.
That's a very, very positive move.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions for Jamie? All right, thank you very much. All right, item eight D, special for September minutes, September financial report for the Arlington Historical Society.
I just wanted to include this, so council could see what the historical society is up to, they'll be meeting in the council chambers here starting next month when it gets pulled out. I'm fine with them meeting in here and I will join some of their meetings to find out what they're what they're working on.
I know they are looking for, they have one of their own members resigned and they are looking for someone to fill that spot on the
They are looking for a treasurer.
Is that what it is?
It's a treasurer specifically, so if anyone is interested or anyone knows anyone who has a love of history and maybe a little banking or bookkeeping experience, or reach out to Dwight Kevitsky.
Do we know that the design was that, was that that new exhibit that they were looking at, putting in? When I was looking through the numbers, that rebel design, well that one there was lighting, but I thought there was another one that was on there that had to do with almost like an end of the year thing.
Could be their lighting too, I know the lighting has been a big project there, they received Minnesota Historical Society grant for that.
And I think it was mentioned made about an adjustment had to be made in the lighting in one of the areas and I don't know if that was is the item you saw a big ticket item, is it?
Yeah, where did you?
Okay.
Tell me if you see it. I'm sure it's not that rumble design.
Rumble design.
That wasn't.
That's lighting.
Yeah, yeah.
And the lighting's great, I was I was in there, I don't know, a few months back and it's majorly different than what it was, you know, I would say two years ago when we were there.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on that? All right, we will move along. Item number nine, our resolution fifty four dash twenty twenty, resolution awarding cares funds to small businesses.
These are our grants to small businesses, they were first approved by the EDA. The revolving loan fund committee had a chance to look at all the applications, everyone that applied is getting some funding. We scrutinized them for probably about three hours, scrutiny was on that committee as well as Lori Swanson. We scrutinized it to make sure that the what they were asking for was eligible for care response. Because we will be responsible that they use it appropriately.
So they aren't responsible to reporting and using it properly, I thought we were sort of off the hook once.
No, we are not off the hook once we give them the funds. We are responsible for reporting that one.
Yeah.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, truly.
No, I'm glad we could help out the businesses, we just need to make sure that they're using it appropriately. We had to do our due diligence with this.
I want to introduce resolution fifty four twenty twenty, awarding care sponsors, small businesses and transferring funds from general fund one oh one to EBA two oh four.
Sorry.
Resolution fifty four dash twenty twenty, introduced by council member Bachelor, second by council member Morgan, that is a resolution awarding care response to small businesses and transferring one oh one into EBA fund two oh four and the total amount is thirty three thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and nine cents. Is it for the discussion? And then we'll vote by roll call, council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Oren.
Yes.
Council member Bachelor.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Five votes in favor and then against, resolution is adopted.
Are we going to have to like vote to approve the checks too, or are you guys?
Nope, that's what you just do, they'll they'll be on for approval at the next council meeting, they'll be on with your bills.
Okay, next is resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty, resolution recognizing national pregnancy and infant loss remembrance.
This one, I believe this one that the city approves every year, so I'd like this one to be approved again this year.
I want to introduce resolution fifty five twenty twenty, resolution recognizing national pregnancy and infant loss remembrance.
Sorry.
Resolution fifty five dash twenty twenty, introduced by council member Bachelor, second by council member Oren. And that is a resolution recognizing national pregnancy and infant loss remembrance. Any questions, any discussion? There are none, vote by roll call, council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bachelor.
Yes.
Council member Oren.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolutions adopted. Resolution fifty six dash twenty twenty, resolution designating the funds received from the twenty two thousand nine street improvement project, be deposited into fund three fifteen.
This came about after I was working on the budget and spoke with Tom Olinger, we'll continue to receive some assessment money on the two thousand nine street improvement project, but we have paid that off. Remember, we paid off the three hundred and some thousand dollars, so Shamble Shannon Sweeney and Tom said, put it in, it was a good idea to move it towards the next project we'd like to pay off, which is the two thousand four street improvement project.
How long will we continue to receive the two thousand nine?
It was a couple of years yet, I remember off the top of my head, but it's a couple of years.
Oh, there's resolution fifty six twenty twenty, designating the funds from two thousand nine into fund three fifty. Second.
Council member, our resolution fifty six dash twenty twenty, introduced by council member Morgan, second by council member Sharpie. That is a resolution designating the funds received from the two thousand nine street improvement project, be deposited into fund three fifteen. For the discussion. Questions? There are none, vote by roll call, council member Bachelor.
Yes.
Council member Oren.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Gilman.
Yes.
Five votes in favor and none opposed, resolution is adopted. Item twelve, rescind motion from a meeting on September twenty first to purchase computers due to a lack of two bids.
I put this on the agenda as a reminder to myself that we did not have two bids, I made a motion to approve those and I realized it that night after the council meeting, so I'd asked that we make the motion to rescind.
I think we also forgot about that.
I didn't think of it.
Or so.
Those computers.
No, I get that, so the motion was a do not exceed motion.
Right.
So it was not saying to purchase from, you know.
But we still should have had two bids in front of us.
Two bids to compare. To be testing the market out there.
No, I know, but there was nothing saying that you couldn't do that, right? So we approved a dollar figure, not buy it from this shop.
Depends on how it was worded.
I say, it depends on how you interpret that though.
I thought it, I thought it was.
If it was specifically worded that it would be purchased from
It was, I made the most of it.
It wasn't.
It was, yeah, in the minutes, it was not sixty twenty two thousand.
And no, no source was mentioned, all right, well, but I know legally.
We should have had two bids.
We legally should have had two bids, even though
I'd feel better if we had two bids, just to
All right, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
I would just feel more comfortable, two bids.
Motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Bachelor, to rescind motion, the motion from nine twenty one, September twenty first, to purchase computers due to lack For the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was no? Motion carried. By the way, to rescind, we did need four times the votes, so just for future reference.
We had five.
We had five. Item thirteen, approved deny care's funds to purchase of seventeen computers.
James. Here's, James has a second quote for us now on computers, but I wanted to say something about the care's funds that are left, I did my reporting today, we have eighty seven thousand dollars left in our care's funds. Please keep that in mind when looking at the things that are coming up, yeah, we have the request from the library and the fire department. And James will go over the cost of some of these network upgrades too, so if my recommendation would be to hold off on the computers, because it's not something we need right now. I would rather see some of those funds go to upgrading our internet and our security at the city than necessarily to purchase all those new computers right now. And I would like to make sure that funds are available for the ambulance, the fire department, the police department, anything they may need yet that's hopefully related. So, James, do you want to?
So I'd actually be in support of Amy's idea as well, to hold off on the years. As we're finding, we're going to go through other companies as well, we're finding more and more points of breach for our data. Such as government cloud with Microsoft, Texas has on the business cloud, we have multiple security breaches on our physical and mobile infrastructure inside the building. So I'd say that our network is making sure that our software and hardware is up to date and be much more important than we here, so I would hold on to that as well. Still need the computer to manage the network and security, so they're going to come with the upgrade. Unless there will still be a server involved, and I have a couple ideas of how to kind of reduce the cost of that because of the fact that certain units need to run point sensitive, if you go branding, so.
So then you were addressing item thirteen, as far as using care funds for computers and your recommendation would be not to do that at this time?
Right, I would hold on on that. Do it over a period of time to spread out the cost of windows, period for the end of life is is a much more appropriate range at the point.
Any comments from the council, everyone in favor of moving on?
Right now, we have care spots that we could work to go in preparation for plan for future account, but.
It's not something, I was going to say, don't roll it out completely, if there's money left from the first meeting in November.
It is still an option. It's just one of those things where I would say, you don't focus on it.
Don't, yeah, let's make sure everybody else has funds first.
Good, Amy, can you elaborate more into what took us down to eighty seven thousand? So I mean, the last last time we talked, it was, you know, we were going to have thirty some for going to businesses.
The biggest, yeah, the biggest expenses, I did put our thirty three thousand of the grant to the businesses on the last reporting. And I also was able to put ambulance staff time, because they are health workers. So I did, and that is allocating their salaries through December. I put that on this reporting already, so that I'd give an accurate picture of how much money we'd actually have left.
I would like to see us at least keep keep an open mind about purchasing some computers, half of them maybe, not the whole works, like you said at the last meeting, it financially is hard, unless we do what we're doing with our other budgets and starting to put away. But it's, you know, it's a big chunk of money to spend all at once on computers, updating everybody at once, it's nice to kind of have it in in phases. In phases, so that, thank you, so that if 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 they're starting to fail, they don't all fail at the same time.
Right.
You know, so it's nice to have that mix in the mix.
The eighty seven is including the what we just did for businesses.
Correct.
So that's already taken out of there.
Correct, I put that on the recording.
All right.
Okay, so then we'll move on to item fourteen, approved deny use of care sponsor network equipment.
So Amy, I believe was able to get the CIT quote to all of you, does everybody have a copy of that?
It was on your chairs.
Oh, okay.
There it is.
So CIT is the company that came out originally, gave us a much lower quote that wasn't recommended for working shit. They did come back quite strongly to prove that they want to do this right, they came back with their full sales team. And Amy and I both sat down and went through our entire network, everything we need, everything we want. They did everything from if we wanted to renew our current firewall systems to what we think that would be replaced infrastructure. Here, they provided five different proposals to us that we can kind of work with. If you look at all of them together and just put a big number together, it's not recommended from what I'm looking at, it includes everything, so they were looking at a cable proposal. A watch guard renewal with our current firewall, the computers, network infrastructure. The Office three sixty five government cloud transition from the business cloud. And then managed service tools which allows us to run our own network instead of having to call them and get billed every time we have a question such as getting a password here. As far as what I'm recommending from this quote, we would be looking at a total of about forty six thousand, forty seven thousand dollars, which is slightly higher than Exter's, but I think it's a much more responsible company. They did send a couple of references from the city of Rosemount, I believe it was the city of Eden, Amy, do you remember in the email?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, so two much larger cities than us that have utilized CIT and seem to be very happy with them. Since we got that email today, I haven't been able to reach out to them, but from the equipment and everything that CIT provided in their proposal, but they did a much more reasonable, a much more responsible company to go with. So.
It was Rosemont and Prior Lake.
Rosemont and Prior Lake, thank you. So to kind of go through things, as far as I'm recommending, I'm not recommending the watch guard reel. I'm not recommending computers at this time, the network infrastructure, I'm only going to recommend kind of bits and pieces of it, I spoke with Austin, the sales team member that's been working with us on this. And he said, doesn't all absolutely have to be done, there's some bits and pieces like chosen. The Office three sixty five government cloud migration, I think that waits, we're currently operating just fine, it's just a matter of later on down the road when our contract sets up with Microsoft, maybe it's up to a certain and then the managed service board is something we're going to want to be able to do so that we can manage our own network and not have to get billed a hundred and seventy five dollars every time a call is packed. So with that being said, the cable and proposal is seven thousand one hundred sixty four sixty nine, that's something that's going to be checked, that's for the network infrastructure. The network infrastructure operating itself. They have a HP server on here for a cost of nine thousand dollars and our dress for a server at the cost of about eighty four hundred dollars. I can get us a refurbished server that would be similar specs, much less cost, and be able to do everything we need, so we'd be able to cut nine and eight, so about fourteen thousand dollars off there. The new firewall for the EMS building is twenty two hundred dollars. The ubiquity agreement machine that they're proposing that's all on all the buildings has a firewall service built in. So I think it would be redundant to have that watch card purchased at twenty two hundred dollars, so that's another two thousand two hundred that I would recommend be taken off. And then the computers are included in the network. And then the computers are included in the network infrastructure bid that's in front of you guys at sixty thousand, one of the seventy-five. I would also take that off. And as we discussed in the last notion, to just kind of hold off on that and do it in waves so that we can manage the cost and.
In the future.
Replace all of them at the same time. So that would put the network infrastructure cost for about forty-seven thousand dollars if I can mark out, right?
Forty-seven thousand even, or?
Um, forty-seven thousand and eighteen, so I. I don't trust my math considering I left my phone at home for once. Forty-seven thousand, or forty-six thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cents is under my scribble math on that one.
Forty-six four ninety-two.
Correct. And then the managed service tools. I believe the proposal is called the managed service proposal. This isn't a managed service from Techstars. This is, or not Techstars, CIT. This is simply them giving us the tools and the software and everything we need to be able to make sure that everything is running properly. Everybody has access to everything. If you have any questions, just to redo spray, stuff like that. So that managed service difference, the tools to manage your own network would be sixteen thousand forty-five dollars. There's a lot of numbers, but. At the end of the day, I think CIT is gonna be a much more responsible company for this, I think they're gonna do a lot more.
We said that we can save money on a refurbished server instead of just saying the new.
Yes, I do have an older Dell R seven ten server that is collecting dust. If the city would like to take it, I'm more than happy to provide it. It does have similar specs. And I can have CIT approve whether or not they would recommend it for the network.
So when it comes to. Warranties, that sort of thing, when something like that is known, there's.
Correct. At, at that point, it would just be a server that I know to be working, but there is no warranty. If you went with an AC server, you've got the extra cost, but you have that one year company warranty that we go with it. So that would be. So.
So when your company warranty?
Yeah, I believe any server from HP. If I remember correctly, it was listed on here. Actually, this one has a three-year extended warranty included on it. So three year, yes.
Typically, I mean, a third maturity, so.
That's kind of good. That goes with computers, too. Computer dropped in as well, so.
It's nice to have you, so why don't you just make me six and very expensive pieces?
Right, absolutely. I'm just looking at how to fit things into that eighty-seven thousand that we have left, which we're gonna do, because I don't wanna have the network proposal completely wipe out everybody else's idea. So is your original proposal completely off the table? Yes, I have included those on, so that's what's on. Yep. These all appear to be with the same company. Is there another company that's? Techstars, I believe, was the one that was. Original? Yep, so last week, or not last week, the last conference we had, Techstars put in a proposal for thirty-eight thousand nine.
Yeah, it was in your packet again. There it is. It's up on the screen.
Are, are both of them bidding on the same spec? So, you know, this is, they're both bidding the same thing, or each company providing? When you look at proposals, yes, Techstars only bid on the network infrastructure. CIT provided separate proposals so that it was kind of an apples-to-apples comparison for each part. Since we needed a second comparison for the computers, CIT was happy to provide that. Since we had Microsoft, CIT was happy to provide that. It was multiple things that CIT came in and said, from our experience and looking at your guys' current situation, we're gonna provide you both proposals to make sure that you know where you need to be later on that road. So as far as the network goes, with Techstars, yes, is not without computers. And Techstars is thirty-one, four, sixty-nine for just the network? That's the deposit.
That's the deposit.
Total is the thirty-six. And that is just for the network. So if we're looking just for the network, the comparison difference from what I'm recommending to Techstars quote would be a difference of thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars to forty-six thousand four hundred ninety. And Techstars included installation? Yes. So I did notice on the CIT that, you know, on their fine print, it basically says it's gonna be whatever the hours ends up being. So they've only quoted a hundred and twenty, but it could be, you know, it could be two hundred. Austin, he says typically it is lower than that because this is a new environment that they haven't worked in before. They quote higher, but typically we really end up less.
So we'll go to two numbers, two numbers, thirty.
Four, sixteen.
Forty-six four ninety-two.
And your recommendation, James, is, is with CIT even though we're letting consider more money?
Yes, I would, just because our experience with Techstars has not been great. Every time we meet a password from them, they're charging us a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a phone call.
Right.
So I can't, can we even do that? I mean, what's the purpose of forcing you to have two bids?
You can go with the lowest responsible bidder. So if you feel that CIT is the more responsible bid, you can go with them, even if they are higher.
Yeah, and based on past experience, I can tell you over the last four or five years, I've heard nothing but complaints about Techstar from City South.
I was gonna say, yeah, even before I was here.
I like how they, I like how CIT came in, gave us a la carte pricing for you to be able to implement, or you can save the cost. As far as if we were to go with CIT, the two things that you would wanna have done right away would be this managed service proposal and cable service acceptance, correct?
I would be the network infrastructure and the.
Cable.
Right, it is, but the infrastructure upgrades, we could still work with some of the items in there for price, correct?
Yeah, so in the cabling service acceptance. I believe it is, or no, it's the infrastructure upgrade. Sorry, I got my things messed up. And the infrastructure upgrade, that's what includes all the hardware and everything like that, right?
So if you approve CIT, since he wants to take things out, it should be not a not to exceed vote?
What's, the reality is that those are not happening physically spent.
It can be allocated if we're invoiced from them. If we've agreed, we've signed something and we've been invoiced by them, I can mark it down as, that's an expense.
And talking with Austin over at CIT, he did say that if we do give a do not exceed number, that there are quite a few adjustments that can be made. There's quite a few different products that can be used, lower quality service. Providers, stuff like that, that maybe we don't have the three years and we have just the companies in one year with the service. We don't go with solid state hard drives, we go with physical spinning hard drive, stuff like that. There is a lot of adjustment that you can make to make sure that.
James, do you know how quickly they could come and do it? It would be nice if they could get it spent, if we could get this done during our time period to spend it, which is due the end of December.
That's another question that I asked Austin, but I certainly can.
How soon they can come in?
Yeah, given that they've been very willing to come in on a full week's notice just to go through and they're not charging us for it, and they're just spending their own time and bringing full teams, I would think they'd want to get it done briefly.
I was impressed. They brought three people in that night with James and I last week, and they came fairly quickly and changed your stuff to them, so.
So we are sort of under a time crunch with this.
Yeah, we do have, we do have to spend this money.
Yeah, we can't keep pushing this out as far as.
Let's make it now.
Upgrade that piece to happen.
Correct.
And I guess my feeling is, based on the feedback on Techstar, is if we're gonna fix all this and do it. With funds that we can do it with, let's do it with the company that seems that they're right, sets up the best for the future.
And I can talk with Austin about the managed service tools, if it's an absolute necessity that we get those tools, or if it's just something that they can show us where the logins are and manage it that way. That's, that's sixteen thousand dollars along this group tools.
Okay, chair would entertain a motion.
I was, I was just gonna maybe throw something out there based on the use of thousand, you know, if we. So we're looking at, you know, forty-six for that upgrade. If we threw ten out of that for computers, which kind of splits it up, leaves us at the.
Yeah.
About thirty thousand left. I assume there's gonna be a request on voting votes, and, you know, I forget what that number was, if it was nine or twelve, somebody was around that.
It was around nine.
So you get that, and then maybe we're left with twenty thousand, whatever, stuff like.
Comes up.
Yeah, I would like to point out, though, that the network infrastructure that Techstars provided in this was thirty-eight and forty, forty-seven, forty-six. But we do have that cable and proposal for CIT that we need to be done. So if we were to go with CIT, we would have those two.
Seventy-one, seventy-one sixty.
Yes, seventy-one sixty-nine for the cable. Yes.
Plus the forty-six.
Plus the forty-six.
Plus.
Okay.
I know there's, it was very confusing when I went through, that's why I had Austin.
Yeah, we got it, yeah, at the very end of the day.
Yeah, he actually picked up while he was at home, like.
Seventy-six, fifty-seven, twenty-six.
Fifty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. We've been doing all the math on the fly though tonight, so keep that in mind. Fifty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I would like to add. Ten computers like there for ten.
Amy, I don't know if you wanna do the math, I can give you the number per computer that you can get. Per computer, for the lowest cost provided was nine fifty-eight computer, so ninety-five hundred.
Second time I did, I came up with, I was off by five dollars. So the total altogether was sixty-three thousand one hundred fifty-six, sixty-nine. I said a lot of math on the fly, pick a not to exceed number.
And we do, to go forward with CIT, like I said, there's a lot of. Here, Austin said that you recommended on there. Those can be adjusted, that we use a different model. Is that the tower, or is that the whole? Or is it just a, those are laptops?
Oh, is Lisa's computer?
Uh, she is a fair, she's using an older, she is using her old Windows seven one yet, but she does have a newer one. She is not used.
Oh, okay. So that has to be switched over.
Yeah.
That, that's a breach right there. Huge. That, that needs to be changed.
Yeah, the two issues that we're running in with is computers are still running with us having a call lines. Unless she's not doing anything online, but.
She's been a lot of stuff that she's been.
Yeah, it's the waters powered by Microsoft, so it's vulnerable, to say. Yeah, once those Windows updates quit, there's no security passing, there's no. Windows has completely said, you're on your own. And I can also take a look into what it would take to just upgrade the components in that computer to get it to Windows ten, if that computer would be able to support Windows ten, but I would write that.
I think it's all the upgrades. She has a new one.
Yeah, she.
She needs the social. She has one with Bannon on it. I, I'm not sure exactly what the issue has done. Do you remember?
Oh, with that other one.
Was wanting to use the new computer. It was slow.
Yep. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what was going on with that one. I think it sped it up a little bit.
Little bit, but it was still kind of slow.
It's still, it's still gonna make it somewhere, and I don't know if that's for both of them.
Correct.
Cause I would pick it.
So, so, so maybe, I mean, just to get in, in the weeds a little better, whatever, maybe focus on me saying that we've heard. I believe we said computer was coming more than the nine fifty-eight of her computer. So that it's gonna have the speed that she wants and do what she wants, but she's gonna get rid of that.
Old one.
And then. You can give that one that has that program on to the other.
Yeah, pass along to me because I need Bannon on my computer too, and this one doesn't have it.
So maybe do a little shift or something.
So council was to make a move not to exceed the dollar figure would be what?
Well, sixty-three thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents is what I've come up with.
I'll make a motion to move CIT not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars on infrastructure cabling and.
Second.
Motion by council member Thatcher, second by council member Ryan, to go with CIT for the network equipment upgrade. And you specify the, what, what portions of this not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. For the discussion.
Where would this be going to?
Whoever needs it, uh, will need to take a look. I think it's at malls.
I would say probably the city administration staff before we start looking at replacing like all your.
Well, I'm just what I was asking, you know, what's the priority and what the age of other ones are.
Yeah. I would say the office, considering Amy has a computer that she can't even get in this point forward, and that's enough. So adapters, do you even get?
But that is.
This is, no, it's not. What? I brought it, Ted bought it from Best Buy. I brought it to Best Buy. No, he did not purchase the warranty through them. So, no, there's no warranty through any, for anything on this one. I tried.
Yes, they would be second back to a good pricing.
I drove to Macato with my computer and brought it and was told, nope.
I believe you said you had to think your own thing.
I changed my own fan out on this one. The fan died.
Well, I mean, you know, there, there's, yeah, there's a reason why. I mean, there's a reason why we go through companies instead of going on our.
It's a Best Buy, yeah. Correct.
Okay, motion by Thatcher, second by Ryan, to make that purchase center of network equipment upgrades, not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. Further questions, further discussion. Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, item fifteen, approved deny CARES funds for the voting booths.
Would you like to come forward and talk about this? This has been on the council agenda before. Vicky requested it come back on the agenda one more time to, since we had CARES funds left over. To ask to purchase the four station voting booths, for preference is the Franklin Voting Booths.
I did look when it was set up for two weeks.
I wanted, and I did that a few weeks ago, just so you guys had time to come and go in with you. As you can see by the picture up there, there's how tall they are. I can bring them in, show her privacy plan, how they compare to our sing listing, which are in the interim, I can bring them in. But the top little blue plate is also the privacy. But when I did bring them over, I was standing with them with another employee that was fairly tall, and we were not having an issue with standing out with privacy. Fairly tall person, like jokingly stand there, and I don't think you can have an issue where.
The other ones are shorter. He's like seven feet tall.
I can bring it in. I was bringing it.
I would have to be trying.
Well, not really. He was probably, so I brought him over from Lister, just thought, well, maybe a visual, might help. After I did further looking at the skew of it, these can be, these are all inclusive, one piece. Nothing comes off of this particular unit. It's all portable. Trays come down. If you don't want for social distancing for colder reasons, I can pull down two trays. I can pull down three trays or all four. So I can. So I can restrict. How they get used. If it's for two person, three person, four, four. And that's why I got all three from Lither over there. I set one up with all four trays down, one with a three and one with a two. And if you're concerned for COVID, which this year, yes, COVID is on the books. But I'm looking for trying to get people processed going forward in future elections, just to get more people to process and storage of these devices. The ones that Amy found were cheaper, but after I looked at them, they come apart. They're not as sturdy. Construction wise as these are. So that's the reason I'm always striving for these. Versus our single stack. Again, if someone wants to see it and stand next to it, compare what it looks like standing next to that in our single, why do we walk next door and bring one in? I don't know how else I can put it to you, but. I'm, I think, I don't think privacy is an issue. I think privacy is more of an issue with their older units than these.
I did talk to a coworker at the winter that has bought the nice bullets that. That says, never had any concerns or anybody looking in and anything like that. Um, the way I look at it with these balls. No matter what, what, what we decide to do, eventually the ones we have are going to have to replace. And if we don't do it now, or if we have the money available, we'll have to do it and budget for it. Right now, you're composing ten of them?
Ten of that stand.
Ten of that stand.
Gives you forty.
Forty people.
One handicap per quad unit. And right now I have one and I have fifteen stands, one of which is.
Yeah, forty, forty people for ten stands, one for, I know for forty people, that's by forty individuals.
Yeah, and they're, for the price that they're asking for those individuals is half or better of one of these. On units that can again be used two, three, four people. And if you're really concerned, my judges and I will be dictating if I don't vote it right now, someone can't vote at that one. We'll make sure that they're two feet there. And again, with COVID, after situation of the primary, um. You're concerned about how many wrong people, I think people can stand in line, waiting to sign in and or put their ballot in the machine longer than it'll be at the morning stand. And talking with the state. If you are within six feet of someone's space for more than fifteen minutes, that's where the concern comes in. I don't see if you have, even if I put it up for two people. Put them opposite of each other. They're not going to be standing there for fifteen minutes. Yes, it's going to take longer for them to vote because it's a bigger length of your ballot. But they're not going to be standing there fifteen minutes in each other's space. More than, they're going to be, as I said, in line writing to sign their name and put the ballot in the machine longer than they will get that ballot. Truthfully.
Well, I think we've got to look at the future too, and those, you know, the. COVID's not going to be around forever. It's not going to go away right away. It's not going to be around forever.
And I'm just looking, again, I was just looking primarily trying to get more people to process through a larger election. Every two years. More comfortably, professionally, and also storage for the space we have hands built, because that's an issue. I can get forty people processed right now versus fifteen. That's huge versus having to put a table on and there's no privacy between people and that ballot sitting open as they're trying to like fill it in.
I want to share something that Vicky doesn't know yet either. She had sent me a link for a grant last week that I applied for. We received it. So we received an additional five hundred dollars to use towards election supplies.
No, sold.
Five hundred bucks. Five hundred extra bucks.
Also have to spend care response on elections.
There's no requirement that we spend on, there's no requirement that we spend certain dollar amount on election.
It's there for elections. Keep in mind, um, we can use after the election, the net community. She can use our staff time for cleaning of the supplies. She can use that towards.
With the cares money, I have been allocating some cleaning, cleaning supplies, cleaning time, my time.
If I have to put extra judges on for simply sanitizing during the process. That cares money covers those extra judges' hours versus regular time when I have paying that judge for it too.
Right, out of the budget, so.
Yeah, so we actually got it really.
We got it. I got notice of it right before I came in here for the.
But then, I mean, I just throw a number of ten, but even if you had to order me twelve, like this, that's forty people. That's, that's a lot of people we get. Right, but you're still going to have the old ones as well set up, right? We, if we need them, what do you mean if?
For this year you will.
Yeah, this year we will.
But eventually those old ones, I could say now.
Eventually do, that's, that was the intent when I initially put this on for the capital improvement was start reading the old ones out as we just moved ones in. And start replacing because they're twenty years old. But if there's nothing wrong with them, why not continue to use it? I mean, if the whole, if the whole thing is, let's get these people in and out and voting and they were, they're not going to be around each other to catch COVID. Or ballots long, but if you have fifty spots, sixty spots for people to vote. So they will get through the line, which that's, that's where they're going to be standing next to someone a lot longer. My scares money came up, my scares money came up, and it's not affecting taxpayer dollars right now. This is money we're getting from the state for this purpose to get people processed through. I thought it was a little brainer. To order as many as we could right.
So I mean, it's sort of in a way, but I, we, we have to look at it as prioritizing as what's the most important. So we, you know, I think the council took a, a stance and said that the businesses were utmost in certain importance. And at that time, there was like, you know, potential of thirty-seven, forty, whatever it was that could have gotten five thousand dollars at least. So we're doing math on it. It might have wiped out two of mine. So back then is different than where we sit today. You know, if this was, if this money wasn't here and I was prioritizing, I would not put this above, you know, potentially something elder for the city. Since it is and it does qualify, I mean, I, I support buying them and, and just moving on. Only because of.
We have to look at businesses when your money need to go or if you don't like, we understand, but we'll get to the point of. I get to see the money get lost when you send your bill, right?
Well, I, I don't know that we're.
I don't think that's going to happen now.
So you know, that's, that's again, that comes up just, I mean, as we're whittling away at it, it's.
We spent a good chunk tonight.
Yeah.
Then I'm not against it either. My point was just saying that if you purchase these, we have that many more to move people. Especially in the new one this year. So you don't have to get rid of something that's. Cause I'm going to be identity for the projects. I knew we wouldn't have a turnout for the primary, but in general, I will be marking six feet. I don't want to buy stickers. You don't want my stickers from the foot. Peter State, which just one of them. I did it for years with craft market. Just go make an X on the floor and I will measure it six feet apart, keep them in line, six feet away from each other as they're entering and their exit in the building.
Well, people could stay at the booth. So if the, if you've got, you know, four or five in line waiting to put it in the machine, they could stay at their booth until that line.
Yeah, yeah. The machine can only take you to that. I guess. I just thought, yes, making down the road, it's time to start looking at replays.
They were sturdy. I mean, I checked them and moved them around and, and they seemed as though they'll compact and all really nice.
Thank you for looking at them. That was no point to bring them here versus like the cheaper ones ever. And really look at them, they come. And I don't think taking apart all the time, that's going to be your wear and tear on it where, yeah, this holds up with the built here too. I like, which new, ten voting booths. For eight seventy-nine each.
Slaughter.
Who was that, please? Second?
Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Sharpie to approve the purchase of ten four station Franklin voting booths. At eight hundred and seventy-nine dollar, dollars per, that would bring total to eighty-seven hundred and ninety dollars, eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety. Is there any further discussion? You're not all favor say aye?
I.
Motion is carried.
Thank you for the determination.
I just gotta work in my body. That's all.
I always looked at it as probably only a matter of time. It's just we need to get closer to this point here or.
Okay, moving on to item sixteen, discussion of future Arlington's portion of cable commission.
I'm going to turn this one over to Matt Sharkey. It's something we've been discussing at the council meetings for the past several meetings. So Matt, would you like to give us an update?
Right, as of right now, tomorrow we'd have a meeting, uh, my first cable commission meeting. Basically, uh, to discuss whether or not to spend some money to do an upgrade so that. Uh, the cable commission can continue to broadcast on, uh, the H D channels on media com. I know there, there's some other things involved with this, um, that they, that the way that we brought up. Uh, that one conversation to a time emails back and forth. He still feels that the cable commission is viable. Talked too late about it, kind of give him, you know, we discussed the cable mission and a bunch of other things. Here's my concern. Um. And it has been my concern the moment I found out they want to spend six hundred and thousand dollars to upgrade. Do this is, and maybe it'll change after the meeting. I don't know. Cause I'll first have to reach the meeting and see what's going on, but. We spent the last, how many years listening to cut the cord, cut the cord streaming. And. It just doesn't mean it's a lot of sense. It's like, I'm on something that is not going to reach a lot. Any feedback, was there any feedback from the churches in the school?
Don Cox from St. Paul's Lutheran was the only one to reach out to me. Um, he was pretty adamant that we continue with the cable commission, but didn't really give me a good reason why in our phone conversation. He was going to speak more at the cable commission meeting tomorrow night.
Do you guys want to hear from me at all?
Yes, Wade Warner is joining us.
Yeah.
At the corner.
Can you guys see me at all?
Yep, I'll see you, Wade.
All right, great. Hey, thanks for having me, guys. This is long overdue and, uh, I'm going to take some of the blame for that as well. But the cable commission is something that's been around since the early nineteen eighties. I got involved with it, uh, the mid nineteen nineties. I started doing some broadcasts with the high school over in Winthrop. G F W schools and then in two thousand I signed on and, um, started helping out Ron Swamberg. He was kind of. On the founding committee back when it was Tri-X Cable Vision. I don't know if any of you guys remember that. So for five decades now, we've been taking a look at, uh, different ways that we can propose things to the communities. And it started off V H S tapes, went to DVDs. Uh, the equipment that we have right now is good. It's a good ten years old. Uh, we had a lightning storm not long ago that really put a dagger right in the chest. So what we're looking at right now, and I understand what Matt was saying too about, um, the internet because of all guys. I also work as a tech coordinator over at G F W schools. So yes, a lot of things are as far as distance learning goes, as far as. People watching any kind of media whatsoever, there's more than one way to do it. And saying that one way is better than the other, that one's up pretty bait. However, I will be a strong advocate, advocate. For the public access channels because we're actually part of, we're part of a pretty special network. And when this first started back in, you know, the mid eighties, Arlington, Gaylord and Winthrop actually shared classes over the public access channel. Um, part of this is from some of the research that I've done. Part of it is because I know I was an elementary kid at the time. And I was captivated with television and being able to see kids from my neighborhood when I was perusing through the channels. On our TV lineup at home. Um, so what I was actually doing is I was jumping in on one of the channels that they were broadcasting. One of the classes with between the Gaylord, Arlington and Winthrop schools. Uh, could also say Wayne and Garth had a lot to do with this, but the bottom line is, uh, it, it's something that it's a really valuable tool because. Has it been utilized to its, its capacity? Have, have we been doing everything we can? No, because right now I'm pretty much the one guy, the one man show, working with the actual channels and. It takes up a lot of time. So what I am going to be proposing tomorrow to the cable commission. And yes, it's, it's going to be a good sixty thousand dollars that we're looking at. But you also have to keep in mind that these are the dollars that cable bills have been going to since the early nineteen eighties. We have a really healthy budget that has been saved for decades now. Um, a lot of that, we allocate annually to the public schools. We give, uh, money to Sibley East and G F W schools. We give money to the private parochial schools and we also give grants to the libraries. So we like, uh, distributing those funds annually to public entities. And we've also given out grants to other organizations to help them do various things. And, you know, the thought of having that go away is, it is disheartening, but. You know, I'm looking at a presentation that I'm planning on giving tomorrow. Um, there's been so much change that's happened since the nineteen eighties, you know, eighties, nineties, two thousands, two thousand teens. We're going into the twenties, twenty twenties now. And we're not dealing with V H S. We're not even dealing with DVDs. What we're doing now is we're dealing more with telecommunications. Um, that we have right in front of us here on our channel lineups. And those channel lineups, we're going to be able to stream not only the city council meetings live. And play them back, but we'll be able to stream city council meetings live. I'm going to advocate that we get school board meetings going live. I'm going to advocate that we get different school events going live. And all these things will also be available to stream off of a website. So you can watch them on a smartphone, computer. You can watch them on an Apple T V, Roku, um, all these different means of watching television. So public access isn't just the T V. We also have a YouTube channel right now. I can't remember. Is it Tim? Did I talk with? Was it Tim with the city Arlington?
Possibly. Possibly.
Okay, I talked to somebody there and, um, he was unaware that the city council meetings are actually broadcasted on a YouTube channel that we have. And if you actually go on YouTube right now and you search A G G W Public Access T V. You'll see all the city council meetings that are submitted. Um, we have playlists for each one of the towns, Gaylord City Council, Arlington, Winthrop. We have Winthrop events, given events, Sibley County events, um, candidate forums. There's things from the historical society that we've recorded and it's just. Any, any way that we can get this out to our, especially our population, it, it's going to benefit us. And to have something like that go away, you got to keep in mind that sixty, sixty thousand dollar investment isn't something that we do every year. We had a forty-five thousand in dollar, forty-five thousand dollar investment that was made a couple of years back. Maybe even a little bit longer. That was proposed to us, um, as part of the R S fiber. Something with the University of Minnesota Extension Office. And I'll admit that that forty-five thousand dollars, when we wrote that check out. For the University of Minnesota Extension Office program to help them hopefully create things, put things on public access. Wasn't a big advocate and that, that floundered. That was a forty-five thousand check and we were the third biggest contributor in Sibley County. Um, there's a few things there that, I, you know, definitely I, I advocate to do differently, but.
That forty-five thousand dollars, was that for that Makerspace with the U of M at the, in Winthrop?
Yes, yeah. And, and me personally, this is me personally speaking, an absolute disappointment. I ran a children's television program from two thousand one to about two thousand nine and we produced forty episodes of television interviewing people. Um, local butcher, baker, candlestick makers, maybe even a couple of you. We did interviews with, uh. Brad Paisley, Brock Lesnar, Walter Mondale. All because it's something that I had a passion to do and I had these kids. I volunteered the time after school. And we had every fourth grader participate in this event. Now that kind of went to the wayside when I started having children. Um, you guys might understand how that goes. However, the passion is still there to do stuff like that. And I know over on the Sibley East side of things, Mike Petrell's done some amazing things with the Sibley Scoop. Uh, Nathan Thompson did some TV programming for a while over there with the kids. I think it was called K seps. And, uh, I know Tricia Westfall's over there right now and what we're going to be putting out there. This is a huge game changer for the whole. this is a huge game changer for the whole county that could end up helping us immensely in various different ways, I'm talking not only with broadcasting who we are, but economic development, you know, bringing, look at, look what, look what we've got here in Sibley County.
Sorry to interrupt, this is Joe Morgan speaking.
Hi, Joe, nice to meet you, and I apologize, I tend to talk a lot.
It sounds like you've got, you know, you're gonna be proposing a plan. We've heard from our attorney, our city attorney here, is, is basically based on the books. We're not getting any information on funds, and essentially, that's operating the way I, at least the way I took it from him, was, you know, illegally, as far as like us, you know, handing money over, not knowing, you know, what's happening with this money, where's the total, so, so what's the plan for that, and how are you gonna, you know, make that, you know, transition to where that can be, become, you know, knowledge, public knowledge for us to be able to support, you know, moving forward, as right now, for me, I can't, I can't support this because I got an attorney telling me that it's illegal.
Right, well, nobody wants to hear that. But what I'm gonna tell you right now is that in every single meeting that we have, we have a financial report. I actually have the agenda, the financial report, the minutes from the last meeting that went out to everybody on the commission. Those financial reports are public at every single meeting, so whoever the representatives are from your town should have a copy of those, may it be Tom Hattelstedt, Don Cock, may it even go back before that with Galen Wills, even before that. Every month, I mean, we have, I have a manila folder.
Wait, I have a question for you real quick, we have a sample of the information you sent me, which is a snapshot of what's in your accounts, but at the meetings, do you hand out a list of like who you've given money to?
We do have
Spending your money.
Yep, honestly, we don't have that many expenditures, we have a ten dollar a month bill that we pay to Google for online storage. We have my stipend in there, and we also have the different grants and things that go out to the communities.
So you're not a voting member of the cable commission, does the cable commission contract with you?
Yes, they do, and right now, because of the situation that we've got, we have one representative from the city council in Gaylord, and I'm also on the cable commission as well.
What, what did you say?
We have one, one person from the city of Given that's going to be joining the cable commission, and then I am the other representative from the city of Given.
So you're the paid staff and the representative?
Yeah, I guess you could say that.
Wade, Rich Nagel, could you, you mentioned your stipend, can you tell us, I mean, it's a public organization, can you tell us what your stipend is?
Yeah, it's eight hundred dollars, and that's monthly. So, and that goes into all the different production, all the, all the different things that go into making sure everything's on the air, and that's why these past couple of months, we had to come up with a plan to get this going the right way. So any, any other questions that are jumping out at you guys?
Just a quick one, and I'm glad, so I'm gonna bring it up again tomorrow, everything that you're proposing is already out there.
Such as?
Well, streaming and all the stuff that you, that you're talking about.
Yep.
The cities are already doing it, you know, Arlington has, we have our own YouTube page, every, every city's got a Facebook page, it gets public information, now, all the churches, almost all the churches in Arlington are already doing stuff on Facebook, that's already saved on Facebook, it's saved on YouTube. I don't, again, you got a lot of convincing to do to convince me that, you know, basically, we're just reinventing the wheel, and are we doing this just because we've been doing this for the past twenty years? And what does the future look like? I mean, the schools aren't going to, going to live broadcast school events when they want people to come in and, you know, they want spectators to come in and pay, you know, they may broadcast later on. And like I said, I just, if we're looking towards the future, the future's already here, and it's already, the cities are already using that.
I think that's being, I think that's being a little bit, we're, we're not taking a look at the big picture. We went down to Arizona this past spring, and it was during the winter sports events, and I ended up spending a good two, three hours working on trying to get a situation set up to where the school basketball games were being streamed to Grandpa and Grandma, it's not my family, but somebody else that was down there, getting it set up, streaming on their Apple TV. The other thing that this system's gonna propose is that we can continue using all the different organizational programs that, that they're broadcasting on, they can keep using the Facebook, they can keep doing the YouTube, but it's also gonna be live, and it's all gonna be in conjunction with Public Access Channel seven and eight. So, there's, and then especially with COVID right now, you've got parents that can't even attend their kids' games. So that's a big instigator as to why we wanted to start getting some of these things streamed, now, is COVID gonna last forever? No, it's not. Are Grandpa and Grandma's gonna keep going to Arizona? Yes, they are. I just think that we would be omitting a large population of people that would have an opportunity to see something. You know, and, and like I said, this isn't just on TV, this is, this, this is telecommunications through various means. You can, you can, you can think on it.
Well, yeah, I'll hear more tomorrow and, and discuss it. But like I said, I mean, it just, to me, you know, just because we've been doing it doesn't mean it needs to keep going, just because we've been doing it for twenty years, when, as I said, we've got other avenues that are primarily being used right now. The channel seven and eight, obviously, we haven't had too many, it's been down, and what we've had, one, one person asked about it, that tells me how often, how much that gets utilized.
And that's, that's, you, you're not talking to the whole population, though, you know, there's other people that have contacted me as well on behalf of their elderly parents that are sitting somewhere wondering what's going on with the channel, so there is, I mean, anybody that has MediaCom, anybody that has RS fiber, has these two channels, MediaCom is giving us, not giving, but we are going to be able to get set up with high definition, and, and half of it is the program. You know, if people aren't watching it, what are we offering for program? That's why I wanna get this out to where the schools are gonna be able to advocate themselves, and not just the schools, anything that we do in these towns, we can broadcast it on, on something that we have here in the county, we should actually be proud of it.
Okay, Wade, Rick, I'm right here, so who's gonna be going out to the schools to educate them on how they need to go about submitting the content, getting the technology established for the live stream process? Is that something that the cable commission is gonna take on, is going to all these places and all these entities to educate them and inform them on how they can go about making this cable, these cable access channels viable in twenty twenty?
Yep, yep, and that, that's part of my role is dealing with the man, as the manager for the channels. I've already talked to Rich Bussie at the high school in Winthrop, talked to Tricia Westfall over there at Sibley East along with Michelle. Talked to Michelle the other day on the phone for quite a while, there's, there are big opportunities here, and if, we're also a member of what's called MACTA. I'd recommend that all of you take a look at MACTA, Google MACTA, M-A-C-T-A, Minnesota Association of Communication, let me see what it is here again. Minnesota Association of Community Telecommunications Administrators. Now, it's a big acronym, but MACTA actually has a list of websites as well of numerous different cities that are utilizing their public access channels. It, it's a powerful tool yet, just because that the internet is at the forefront right now, I don't think that it's any reason to omit what we have the opportunity to kind of bring together and broadcast from, from our area. You know, it's, there's multiple different avenues that we can take with it.
Wade, Rich Nagel, again, I know one of the largest contributors or franchise fees is from MediaCom. Who are the others that are involved in, in the funding of this, of the cable?
It'd be MediaCom and RS fiber.
Yeah, thank you.
I do understand where you're coming from, but I'm, you know, like, public access is, it's obviously a passion and wanna, wanna grow it, wanna do it right, and we've, we've got everything in these counties, we've got a lot to be proud of, and we can beam it out in various different ways.
Okay, any other input for, any questions for for Wade? All right, we appreciate your being part of our meeting this evening.
All right, appreciate you guys having me, and I'll see some of you guys tomorrow.
All righty, good evening.
You bet, take care.
Can I just ask Attorney Arnison?
Yes.
Is there anything that you would like to add? You sent out a very nice email last week, I don't know if you wanted to share anything with the rest of the council?
Well, I guess I'm curious about what type of financial reports are currently being given by the commission. I know the last ones I saw were not the type of report that you would consider.
Not a true financial report, correct?
No, it was just a, a brief listing of, you know, checks that were written out, you know, to certain people or organizations that month, but there was no, as I recall, any balance sheet, you know, total income, total outgo, total balance on hand.
Could I, could I throw two things in there?
Yes, what's that?
My concern with that as well is, and I've had that question, you know, I'm wondering the same thing, because we've gone through a few different secretary treasures over the past few years. And when it comes to producing something like that, is there a, a template or any kind of document that we can go off of to create something like that, because right now, we just go off our month-to-month balance statement from ProGrowth.
Well, I guess what an organization would normally do is hire an accountant. And, you know, the costs aren't that great, you know, for doing, you know, a simple balance sheet. And I know our Arlington representatives to the commission have requested such a thing in the past, and it kind of fell into a black hole. And so that's part of Arlington's frustration over the years. And I know also that we were quite shocked at one point years ago to learn how much of a reserve balance had been built up in the account. And, and that's another concern, I guess, that we've had, that, you know, it really wasn't the function of the commission to build up a huge cash balance. The franchise fees are supposed to, you know, be spent back into the communities.
I, I would, I would agree with you there, that, that's why we're pursuing this project, but
Yeah.
I, one, one thing that I would really like is some kind of, and we did have an audit some years back where we conducted one ourselves, so I, I can see what we can find from that, but that was numerous members ago.
Yeah, well, and, and a comment the councilman made previously that I had suggested to the council that it was illegal not to have at least a yearly financial statement, a true balance sheet, stems from the fact that this is a public agency, and I think there are state regulations, you know, that require bookkeeping of that type.
So are you talking this, an audit every year, an annual audit?
Yes, and, and I guess I'm puzzled that, you know, the commission has existed all these years without someone blowing the whistle on that. So
Well, I know that we did have an audit a couple of years back, and you gotta understand, the people on this commission, they're usually, that is kind of a revolving door of people that have been on there, and even the people that have been on the commission, they follow protocol as far as meeting agendas and everything, though, but when it comes to getting into financials, we have somebody that's a representative that does the financial reports, but we don't have anybody on hand, so that I can understand where you're saying getting an accountant involved, involved annually would be a benefit, so.
Well, I think not only a benefit, I think it's a requirement, and you know, if, if the commission wants the individual members to have confidence in what the commission is doing, you know, there has to be disclosure. And so, and I think Arlington has some responsibility, you know, as an individual city, to, you know, require such disclosure, you know, as part of its due diligence, and I think our representatives have tried in past years to do that.
Our representative, so the, so the representatives that are on the board, they can recommend just as well that an audit be done.
Well, and I, to my knowledge, they did, and this doesn't come back on you, it comes back on the members of the board. It was their power and responsibility to produce financial records and a yearly audit. And again, I, I know for a fact, our, our representatives in the past requested that the board do that. And as I say, those requests went into a black hole somewhere.
Well, it did, I know that whenever
Frustration.
The word audit, I, I don't recall coming up at any of the meetings, except for when we actually pursued it the one time voluntarily, thinking that it was a good thing to do. But as far as having an audit annually, it's, it hasn't been discussed at all, but I can tell you right now, I'm gonna advocate for it, because there's nothing, there's nothing here to hide, and when I see that balance, that's what leads me to believe we need to start giving these dollars back to the community. And that, that's what I'm advocating for.
Sure, well, and the board, well, well, I'll maybe let the council talk, but
No, I like hearing your take on it too, and that's, that's, that's really good information, and we do have a representative as well, if the council wants to talk with him, Bob Vos is actually our legal representation, so that would be a good resource as well.
I haven't gotten a lot of positive feedback from Mr. Vos. And in fact, I strongly disagreed with some of the positions he's taken in the past.
Oh, now we're getting into legal stuff, I'll leave that between you and Bob.
Right, I just, I just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah.
And in fact, I guess, you know, I'm quite surprised that he hasn't advised the board, you know, long ago about these accounting matters.
Well, honestly, I'm kind of disappointed too, because this is the last thing that, you know, we're trying, we're not trying to pull wool over anybody's eyes, and that's why I'm being so progressive on this, because we have the balance, we wanna use it, we wanna, we want it to benefit the towns. Probably a good idea for us to reach out to Bob again too, and ask him what's, what's going on, you know, you need to give us some direction here.
Sure, well, and it's a protection for the board individually, because they have certain supervisory responsibility, and what if, let's say, after years without an audit, there's suddenly a hundred thousand dollars missing from the account? And I think the board might be individually liable if they weren't providing proper oversight.
Right, yeah, and I, I can understand Yeah, and I can understand why you're saying, I mean, we have the balance sheet, we have, we have a balance and check as far as where everything's gone, but of course, you know, as far as printing off each one of the statements for twelve months, you know, that, that would be the extent of what I would be able to do. But if we need something official, I say let's get it done, I don't understand why, why that would be a problem.
One other issue that came up a few years ago, RS fiber muscled its way onto the commission, and as Arlington's representative, I think Mr. Galen Wills objected to it, and we were surprised that MediaCom didn't voice stronger objections, because this commission technically is a one-to-one relationship between MediaCom and the member cities. RS fiber was never part of the agreement, and we don't believe they, you know, were legally entitled to become part of the commission, and are they in fact paying any franchise fees?
Yep, they, they are, and I'll be on, I'll tell you this right now too, when RS fiber came on board, you can talk with Galen, we were on the same page with a lot of the discussion when it came to RS fiber. We were definitely on the same page with a lot of that. There were some frustrations, there were a couple of heated meetings actually. But the way that it was laid out to us is that we are a franchise that we can have a franchise with MediaCom or RS Fiber because we are a public right-of-way. So there is nothing holding that back from what I understood. And we've actually got, that's another thing where I'm going to have to forward you to Bob, because honestly, I, I program DVDs and get stuff on the air.
Oh, sure, sure, no, I understand. And my comments are directed, you know, to the council, not you. I don't, I don't fault you for any of this. But Mr. Vos and I strongly disagreed on that. And he apparently drank RS Fiber's Kool-Aid, like everybody else did except Arlington. But I guess early on, my understanding was RS Fiber wasn't paying anything to the commission. And one of our concerns that there was no accounting was that our MediaCom franchise fees from Arlington were going into the commission and being spent on RS Fiber projects in other communities. And to this day, we have no knowledge whether that's true or not.
And that goes back to meeting a few years back. As far as the, the one funding project that was fairly contentious was that U of M Extension Office, what was that called, Amy?
It was called the Maker Space.
Yeah.
Erickson came forward with that one.
That was contentious. So, that being said, other than that, which, which was a big one, and which is, which is why it was so contentious, in which it was so far out of the realm, out of anything that the Cable Commission has ever done, which I could say I could feel that the Cable Commission was a little bit strong-armed on that one as well. You know, that, that I guess right now, that's up for debate, but. No, I, our, our biggest thing is we want to give back to the communities. And as far as projects go, projects are what we're coming up with right now. And we do have, we got plans to do some great things, it's just making it happen right now.
Okay, I'm going to break in here. We do have a city council meeting to continue, and we have some people waiting in the audience that are involved in it. So we can maybe continue this discussion tomorrow night when you're here with.
Sounds like a plan. Thanks for having me, guys.
Thanks.
All right, I believe we're on item seventeen. Any business?
This should go pretty quickly. We updated the emergency operations plan. We did not change anything in it except to update the past, the last page with the contact information, because we had a lot of city staff turnover, so we had a lot of updating to do. We met on September twenty-eighth, you saw the minutes were in the packet. That's really the only change is updating that contact information in here. Sorry to everybody who might be watching online as I'm scrolling through this. There we go, that's the only changes we made to this stage.
So, motion is in order to approve the emergency operations plan.
Motion to approve the updated emergency operation plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Omerai, second by Councilmember Batcher to approve the updated emergency operations plan. And I think our next meeting is scheduled for March.
Correct.
And I believe it's, it's available annually thereafter. Okay.
Hopefully we'll have the same staff.
Right. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
No? Is Laura still with us?
Laura, I said aye.
Oh, okay, you got lost in the voices, I'm sorry. Okay. Motion carried. All right, item eighteen, approved the ICAR's funds request Arlington Fire Department to purchase tanks, adapters, filters. Chief Sasek, you're welcome.
Well, thank you guys.
Oh, this is fun.
Thanks for having me. I guess this is the night everybody comes to the party. I just state the facts, COVID isn't going to go away, cancer isn't going to go away. As you know, we're going to be buying US CBAs. And this Tony fighter she's is looking, getting rid of their air van. So that was one of the, one of the two reasons why they had the Cascade tanks. So we can have it pass through the filler and do SCBA's. And we're going to be going to one two six four five hundred tonne tanks. So we only have two tanks right now to fill, so we have two tanks. Gives you the capability of filling tanks faster, more, and with the Tony going to get rid of the van, because the maintenance is so high, we'd be filling off the Cascades at our fire hall and fill the Cascades for trailer itself. So that's kind of the long, short story of why the tanks are in here. The other component of it is the adapters for the SCBA's. As you know, we all, with COVID, have to wear the N ninety-five masks. But with our new SCBA, buy an adapter, put it on there. You know, we can put filters on which are called T one hundreds, which is actually a step better than the N ninety-fives. And we can reuse these. And the nature of that is once it's attached for a face shield, now we have a face shield. Right now, if we go on our truck, we have boxes and boxes of filters and facials, we use them once we've thrown away. Particular mask we're wanting to buy, I haven't, I haven't placed the order yet. I'm kind of playing a game right now. They did an update, Scott's did an update, so we waited. And the guys really liked the update. Well, there's been another update yet this month, and then we're already locked in on prices. We placed the order. Well, three M, what Scott's? Who makes the best filters out there? So yeah. So these filters come down to three dollars and forty-four cents a piece, which is really reasonable. All the other SCBA's we look at, filters were about fifteen, twenty dollars a filter. That isn't why we're going to go with that particular brand of SCBA, SCBA, but that's just kind of a little bit of story. But with this adapter, we can put the P one hundred filters on it. We can also put filters on it for tear gas. You ever thought there's going to be writing? You can actually buy the filters, have them on a can. So we have, we put the canisters on, we set it for tear gas. We can also buy filters for ammonia acids. It opens up the possibilities so much for us. And the other thing is, what's the number one thing killing firefighters right now? It's cancer. So when we do a grass fire right now, nobody puts on the SCBA, we have you going to tie it up by the grass fire. Well, if you have the ability to put a mask on filters, your eyes stay clean. And you're going to wear, when we do an overhaul, the guy doesn't have a mask on, filters. They don't have to wear that heavy pack. The new packs are going to actually going to weigh about three pounds more than our old packs. Well, I'm kind of looking at the future of the fire department with cancer. That's, you know, that's why we went hard after turnout here in SCBA and wrote all these grants this year. So that's kind of, if I knew there was a lot of money available, why don't I get a couple of aggressive? Tear gas, stuff like that. I, I just did the math, with this, if I consider probably, if we take the shipping out, which we don't know, we've got seventy-two dollars. Based on that what we have here, so the public library is unfortunate. The other thing I will throw up there, if we all cover it under this, we will not, we can call it stuff in twenty-seven more. Because we will have to buy the tanks.
You know, there's only one bid for each of those. John, do you want to explain why?
So, Amy asked me to get two bids on, on the compressor part. Well, the problem with the compressors, the brand it is, if we get a bid from Rick, Rick has to go to Joe to get the price, buy the parts from Stone and Impressive. Same as with the SCBA's, if we go with MSA, only thing that fits an MSA mask or Scott's mask is from that manufacturer. So it's kind of like if you have a Ford truck, you can't put a shitty transmission in it. They're not interchangeable.
Are you buying it directly then? You're not going to a distributor? Is that what I'm hearing?
We, we'd be buying through MES, who is the distributor, or the Scott's equipment.
They're the only distributor?
Yep, they, they have in Minnesota. And then the fire service, there's, we actually didn't like the rep for one of the companies we're dealing with. And that company has a state in Minnesota, and you can't get away from their rep. They, they have, they're given territories, and they can't cross lines. We ran into this one, we were going to turnout here, when we brought in six vendors for a turnout here. One of the vendors had to switch what brand they turned on here, he was in chorus. And he found out we were getting a price from another vendor, and they can't cross.
Does that, does that surprise under the guidelines? So it comes down to, fortunately now, when we're looking at the dollars, not knowing anything about what the Arlington Library is, is wanting.
I will make mention I had a few concerns about the library one, because I didn't actually get any bids or any information on it. One thing I crossed off, because I knew it wasn't eligible, I'd asked our auditors about it. And we've already purchased some cleaning supplies and things that we have just run through our public works budget that are used at the library.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to look at the library's request at the same time. Seventy-two dollars for dealing with the library's requests, isn't that?
Right, I'm thinking it's not going to cover the shipping.
Yeah.
I think it's all gone.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with that.
I am too. I'd say even if we go over a little, to make sure that we covered and used everything, you know, so that when they go through, even if, to me, if we've gone over a little bit, to make sure that we've actually used all of our resources.
I think the council needs to keep in mind the requests that the library does have though, and if there's some legitimate needs that they have, that, that be somehow plugged into the budget for the next year, so that those needs can be met.
I mean, could we not evaluate the, the labor and take, you know, some of that out? Because we were budgeting, I mean, above and beyond, like overtime, and as such, they still do the.
With the, right, that may come in under the sixty-five thousand, like James was talking about.
Right, yeah.
So there's probably a few thousand dollars.
There might be.
I'll introduce a motion to purchase the, let's see here, the tanks, the adapters, the filters, for six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine for shipping, and then thirty-seven hundred for the air, Alex Air apparatus, thirty-seven hundred, and then MES for two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine.
Second.
I think I misunderstood, you were maybe again misunderstood, the total cost with the tanks, the builders and adapters and everything for total sixty-five, sixty-nine.
Crack.
Yep. Yeah, that was the. So that was the, that's the purchase tanks, adapters and filters, sixty-five, sixty-nine, and then it was thirty-seven hundred for the air apparatus.
He's just splitting it up. Michelle, did you second this?
Okay. Motion by the councilmember Morgan, second by councilmember Batcher to approve the ICAR's funds request from Arlington Fire Department to purchase the tanks, adapters, filters for sixty-five, sixty-nine, and then also the other items from Alex Air Apparatus, thirty-seven hundred dollars, and MES for twenty-eight, sixty-nine. So what do we have for the grand total there?
The total is actually sixty-five, sixty-nine.
Well, the total is sixty-five.
Right, that's broken down underneath it there.
Okay.
His, John's grand total is the sixty-five.
Throw my numbers away, we're ready to help the library.
There we go.
I had it all through.
Oh.
No, no.
We're good. So, yeah, total amount of the authorized expenses on the motion by Morgan, second by Batcher, sixty, sixty-five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, six thousand five hundred and sixty-nine. Any, and then there's shipping.
Plus whatever the shipping.
Let's ship it. Any discussion, any questions during that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, approved ICAR's funds request Arlington Public Library in one hundred forty-seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I, I just want to put in my two cents worth. I'm not comfortable just giving them a blank check, because we're, we'll be the ones audited on this. Anything you do approve off of this list, it should just be with a caveat that they provide proper documentation. We need to see receipts.
Have we purchased these items?
We have purchased, we have masks. I have hundreds of masks in my office right now.
So that they could be used.
Right, they could be used over there, and we have purchased, actually, we already approved the Purell Station. I already have a receipt for that. So they said they bought one but need another. That was on my ICAR's reporting already.
Do they receive the one that they bought?
We've paid for it. I got a copy of the receipt from Lisa. Apparently there was one ordered for over here. But I'm not sure that we need ours over here, so that one could go to the library.
They're major, major backorder. I ordered thirty of them. I haven't seen.
Yeah, we, I haven't seen them.
We're talking like four months.
Yeah, we, we already bought two of them. One was supposed to be for over here, but we have our giant container sitting on the table outside of the admin office.
So would you want to go through this list with Kathy and get it down?
Point out, just, yeah.
Get it down to a closer number and bring it back at the next meeting? Is that soon enough, or do we?
No, I think.
Motion not to exceed, or how do we want to do this?
I think I can sit down with Kathy and go through maybe more of the electronic stuff she's looking for. Because a lot of the other stuff, you know, we already do purchase a lot of these cleaning supplies.
Make sure that we just add what we need.
Exactly. Yeah, we need to get some actual quotes too for all the stuff she's asking for.
So consensus of the council then to just, city administration work on that and bring it back for next week?
I'll make motion.
Yeah.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Omerai, to table the decision on the ICAR's funds request from Arlington Library. And that will be dealt with at a future meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, no? Motion carries. Many updates? Is there anything that anyone needs to report or wants to report? There are none? Open discussion? Anything that we need to be discussing at this time?
I took a walk today after a resident informed me that there's been some damage to the walking path. And it seems to have like a lot of bobcat tracks along, along the path as well.
On the cement itself?
On the cement itself. I took some pictures, and I'm going to submit them to Ms. Newsom with the pictures. When they were doing the drainage, tiling, I'm assuming in the grassy areas right next to the walking path there, there's tree areas. There's major cracks that are in many pieces of the concrete. The majority of the cracks are by the manholes that are actually in the concrete. But there's others, pieces and sections of concrete, more so on the west, very west side of the trail.
Near the four-way stuff.
Near the four-way stuff, that, that's really bad. There's like.
No, they were doing some digging in there last week, so.
Right, so, um, I, I would like, I, I would like a couple of things to come from this. Number one, let's see who did it. I think we have an idea and see if we can get them to repair that. And then in the future, not allow any kind of motorized vehicles on those paths at all.
That's always been the case, but it's never, it's never, there's never been any signage on it.
I don't, I don't see any signage.
No, there isn't. It's always been assumed that there were to be no snowmobiles, no motorbikes, no motor speeders, nothing.
No utility vehicles, no bobcats, no work trucks.
I think the only thing, I know Buzz Mats did do some work with the Bobcat on there, but it was maintenance. He asked if they could do maintenance. This was just after the, the trail was put in.
Well, that's to be expected. If you come to the county or come to the council and ask, or have us, you know, throw something out there that we want something done.
Right.
But I mean, them taking their bobcats and. But I mean, them, them taking their bobcats and, you know, spinning circles on the concrete, because they're going here, going there to try and smooth out a grassy area. I mean, I don't think it's, uh, it's not built, the, the trail is not built for, for vehicles. So I just wanted to put that out there, share that.
Okay, is there anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Omerai, second by councilmember Batcher, adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-one.